Okay, I'm going to give you the open office. Are you ready? Are you ready Kelly? Okay. I'm going to make this easy. I'm going to say it and you can say, "Yes, I will," once I'm done, okay? Do you soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinance of the City of Perry, and that you will faithfully perform the duties on the planning commission according to the best of your ability? So help you God. Thank you ma'am. And if you could just sign the paper and date it, you can mail it to me or scan and email it to me, okay? Awesome. Okay, I hope you enjoy the meeting.
All right, it's seven o'clock, a little after, so we'll get the meeting started. Meeting call to order. We have one individual, Kelly Wilson, who just became a member of the board. And I'd like to welcome you there Kelly. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Okay. What I need to have from you right now is to state the city and the county in which you live. Okay, thank you, and we'll do roll call if we need to. Okay, so going on the agenda here.
I'm sorry, one thing we have to do with the law, because she's virtual, all motions have to be by roll call.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Need approval of the agenda. We have to do a roll call on this because Kelly's virtual.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
I need a second.
Support.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye, Craig.
Aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimously passed. And the approval from the minutes of December 7th, 2020. Need a motion on that?
I haven't seen any minutes.
Yeah, I haven't seen any minutes.
I apologize, I did get the minutes, I didn't know you needed them forward.
No, it's my fault.
You want me to copy it and bring it up?
Okay.
I'll be right back.
We'll put that on hold for a little bit. Well, I forgot to ask Kelly if she approved the agenda.
I have not seen the agenda.
Yes, you approved that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Kelly approved it. Along with everybody else. All right, let's start with the new business. We have a rezoning petition from the Perry Christian Fellowship. And they want to change the zoning from residential to commercial. And the reason for that is that they're selling the building. Leland has looked at it and approved everything. It's up to that point right now that the paperwork is okay. And I talked to them this afternoon. And the reason that they want to do it is because the new buyers want to put a air purification office in that building. They will not be doing any manufacturing, just the office. And he stated that they currently own it, but the new buyers wanted to have that before they closed on the sale. So, and he said that all they would have in there are salespeople and office people that would be in the building. There wouldn't be any manufacturing or trucks and so on and so forth going in and out. So, we need to discuss it if anybody wants to discuss it. Larry? Richard?
Two things. Number one, the paperwork is incorrect. It's probably a technical point, but the map that's attached isn't properly oriented, therefore all the descriptions in terms of what's property are not geographically correct. That's point one. And I think point two is we've got to be careful, I think, in terms of rezoning because it creates, should that sale not go through, or two years from now, property would be resold again. Commercial business property in that area, there's all kinds of other opportunities for businesses to go in there, if we may or may not want really going in there because of geographic residents all around it. I'm personally, right now, pretty skeptical on whether or not you could automatically cover a B1 commercial, but this property.
Okay, I understand, because it puts up to my property. My biggest concern is just exactly what you just got done saying. We transfer from residential to commercial, and the guy doesn't like it, boom, and he sells it. He sold it because it's a commercial property. Another thing is, what's he going to do with the lot that's right next to it? And I think we're opening our eyes for a can of worms when we start putting residential into commercial.
If commercial was, you know, if it's oriented correctly, the commercial property is more across Britain. And not, as Dick said, not surrounding. If we approve this one, then who's to say that's residential lot on the south side of Britain isn't pure game to come in and plead a case to become commercial at some point in future?
You know, my thanks to our neighbor Mindy's brother-in-law, who's not very happy. It puts up to him too. Yeah, he said the same thing. Said, "What control are we going to have if that's rezoned to commercial?"
I'm assuming you guys live on the east side of property?
Yeah, we live on the east side. That's my biggest concern.
What, you know what's allowed in the, I can't remember what's allowed in the business? B1?
Yeah, we look at the temporary, what's permitted, if we were to reclassify it as a B1 commercial piece of property. I won't read through all of them, but there's a number of non-office kinds of activities that would ever, ever right to go in there.
Clinics, some of the ones that are permitted without special land use. Clinics, convenience stores, domestic abuse shelters, drive-through facility other than a restaurant, bank, credit union pharmacy, dry cleaner, medical and dental offices, mortuary or funeral home, municipal buildings off parking street. Professional offices. Those are some of the ones. This is page 84 and 85. Those are some of those that are permitted without special land use. Tavern or pub, theater, retail establishment, veterinary clinic. So, those are some of the sample of some of those.
Well, didn't Leland say at our last meeting, we were talking to him, that we could revert back to residential if it changed hands?
We would have to know that the property's been sold. You know, so if we rezon this and they put in this business, if they sell that business and a new business comes in, right now, there isn't a trigger that says it has to come before the planning commission. Unless it needs a special land use or not permitted.
So they could put their air filtration people in?
Yeah.
And then sell it to one of those that are listed on-
They could sell it to a mortuary and then we would not know about it ahead of time. They could just sell it and go there.
Can we put a stipulation in there? That should they sell it, that it has to come before the planning commission again?
Not for rezoning, not for zoning.
Not for rezoning? Okay.
We can make a stipulation that says, and it involves a little more work with the city attorney, that says if the sale of this property goes through, it reverts back to residential. But once the cat's out of the bag, we can't pull it. We would have to somehow jump in there in between the one business selling and the other business coming and have knowledge of that. And right now, unless I'm mistaken Devon, we don't have a mechanism for knowing that. Correct.
There'd be no reason we would.
No.
I don't know if, under the current zoning, there's any opportunity for a special land use under any of the R1B categories that it's cursed currently at, would be the only other option. And I looked through some of them, I didn't see anything that fit, but there might be some opportunity there without rezoning that is still protected as residential property with a special use under defined circumstances.
Well, the other concern that I would have with what Genevieve said was that if it wasn't sold, if the current owners got it rezoned, we rezoned it to business and the current owners kept ownership of the building and just let somebody else lease it to them, we can't trigger it there.
That's correct. Yes. Unless the business that they intended to put in needed a special land use and they would have to come before the planning commission, but there's a lot that would not have to be. Unfortunately. Or fortunately, I guess, depending on what side of the fence you're on.
Okay, what do we want to do?
Can I give a little input?
Yes ma'am.
They paid $300 to ask you to set a public hearing and to ask to be rezoned or either recommended or denied, is where it's at right now. It's not asking you to make a decision tonight. So, my question is, is do you respectfully want to submit as a planning commission that you won't set a public hearing and we would refund their money? Because right now, they've paid for you guys to set a public hearing to either approve, recommend them, or deny them. Okay?
Okay.
It's $300 to ask for rezoning and they paid their fee.
Fast forward a little bit, unlike at least my limited exposure when we had public hearings, we haven't had any negative comments on rezoning. I'm hearing that, you know, if we set a public hearing, I'm not going to put words in their mouth, but chances are, the residents from the immediate area are going to be here and raise concerns, which if we couldn't very well go forward as a planning commission and approve it in light of those, and so we asked them to spend $300.
You still have to go in front of council after your recommendation, it still goes in front of council. So you could deny them and council could say, "Well, we override you and approve it." Not that that would happen, just so you understand where this process is at. So respectfully, you know, I, they didn't know what to do, is what I'm understanding. And the realtor said, "Hey, we want you to rezon it before we sell it to these new people." Is the stipulation that's put on the owners, is my understanding. Which that's a big task. You guys just ran into this on Britten Road. They paid, you had the public hearing and you denied them. This is another example, and you could follow that saying, is that the owner wanted to rezon it, they couldn't tell you what was going in there, and you denied it. This could be the same thing, because the owner can only tell you what he's heard. And he's the one that has applied for this, not the new people. And they can't apply for it because they don't own the property. Okay? But you guys all know this, I'm just kind of putting all the facts that we all know from, you know. This is being pushed hard. The mayors talked to them, the Leland's talked to them, because they were trying to find an avenue, the realtor, when I say they, is trying to find an avenue that the city will guarantee that the business that they want to put in there once it sells, they will get it. And the mayor told them, "City does not give any guarantees. You have to go through a process."
So we could set the public hearing and then deny it after that also?
Yes, you have that opportunity.
Or we could deny it right now?
You cannot deny it right now. You have to go through the formal process of setting a limit.
Well, I mean, we could tell them to refund the $300. Is that what you said earlier?
I'm saying that I'm hearing a genuine consensus and out of respect, you could you could do that. Now, they still might fight you and say, "We wanted to go forward because council may..." They might not accept your answer even then and say, "I don't want to be refunded. I want you to formally go forward and to go in front of council," but you can offer it to them.
So what you're saying basically is we could make a suggestion that we refund them $300 and say, "Listen, this is probably not going to go through the planning commission and get approval." And if they push it, they can push it and we'll keep the $300 and go through the process, but as a courtesy to say, "Hey, this probably isn't going to happen."
I've seen it happen before, that, you know, they want to be... It's just out of respect.
So it comes down to whether we want to do a formal vote or we want to try and let them get an out to get their money back.
Well, if we do that, it's going to be February before our next meeting. And if they want to pursue it, then it's going to be March before we can have a public hearing.
It still has to go in front of council, so at least another two weeks, if not in that week, planning council and planning commission, yeah?
So we could drag them around for several months, knowing well we probably at this point will not approve it.
You could set the public hearing tonight and communicate with the owners, have it done, and then formally put in an email, somebody saying that they rescinded it and the public hearing won't go out. The notice won't go out. Worst case scenario, if you're worried about holding them up. I just try and be, I just feel bad between the current owners and the next owners, because they have to go through this process or not. It's as simple as that.
Okay. So set up the public hearing, email the owner, the current owner, and say, "It's unlikely this is going to go through. Unlikely it's going to go through. Would you like to withdraw?"
Then you have all your bases covered. If they want to pursue it, they can, and you're all set?
If they don't, they can go. That gives them the most opportunity. If they really want to send it up through council. And if not, if they're just going to be like, "Huh, thanks for letting us know." Then no, then no harm done. Okay. So we need a motion.
Now, could they give a special use permit for something like that in this case?
For, as an R... As, for residential? No, they would have to ask for a...
Yeah, I believe it's curling in R1B.
Yeah. Let me see. It's currently zoned R1B?
It's currently R1B. Currently not being used by anything, so he doesn't have to ask for, you can't do a special land use when he hasn't asked for a business that would go under the special land use to request one. If that makes sense? Special land use has come underneath your zoning itself.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's residential now, so we couldn't do any special land use at all?
It is right now because it's a church. It already has, it should already have a special land use, because under R1B, it requires a special land use to be a church in a residential area.
Which could be grandfathered in, because they've been there way before the zoning orders came out, which being quite rare.
How old is his zoning ordinance?
That one in front of you was approved in 2016.
Yeah, I don't see any category right now that jumps out at me under R1B that would-
We can tuck it underneath now. Nope. Yeah, I can't see where we could. Unless there, yeah. No. I don't see one either, Larry. That would be good, but, okay.
Well, then I guess we need a motion.
Need a motion to set the public hearing?
Or if we don't, to set a public hearing and try to talk them out of it, so to speak, we-
I'll wait for communication with you. I'm going to pretend I didn't, I don't know all that stuff. I don't do the formal notice until you guys contact me with that resolution anyway. So as you hold that resolution, you know, I need I need about 15 days, business days prior. That's why your month allows me not to do the 300 radius notice and all that kind of stuff.
But do we need a motion if we're going to table it or something back, you know, see if they would want to-
Well, we should set up, we should start the procedure to set up the public hearing so that if they come back and say, "No, I absolutely want to go through with it," that is at least in play, because it takes so dang long anyways. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the next planning commission meeting in February.
Second.
Okay. Need a roll call. Genevieve?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And me, yes also, and Kelly?
Yes. Yes.
Kelly, see them?
Oh, I missed Richard too. Richard?
No.
No, okay.
And Carol?
Carol isn't here.
She's in.
She's on.
Was she on Zoom?
Yeah, I am.
Carol, we need to have you identify the city that you're in and also the county.
Perry, Chiwasi County.
I didn't know we had two of them.
Carol, I need you to vote on that motion.
I would vote no.
No? Yeah. Okay, so we, what did you say we have?
Forward to DA's. But it should pass to go forward to the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll set the public hearing for February 1st at 7:15. Is that all right?
Chairman, are you going to contact this business owner?
I can. Would I?
That's for you. To give to Devon if they decide to go forward. Please, yes.
Okay. Now, who should I contact?
You would contact the Bennetts. They provided a phone number. Oh, wait, a property owner, yeah. And they have an email here too.
Okay, so that's at 449.
Yep.
Now, during that phone call, should I advise them that the chances of going through are not very good?
I think that's fair. I think you can do that, yeah.
I think it's only right to do, and based on our discussion here.
And if they decide to cancel, can I say that they'll get their $300 back?
Yes, that you will formally let me know, planning commission will formally let the clerk know to refund and that you are rescinding the request for rezoning.
Okay.
All I'm saying is I want a paper trail, but that's what happened and that's what was said. And then I would CC them on there when you're doing that to me, so that they know you've contacted me and that we're all on the same page.
Okay. Now, is there any way that they could give us a guarantee for this? If they decide to go forward?
Guarantee of what?
That that will be that company that goes in there?
They do not have to guarantee. If you want to go forward in something that, you need to reflect on the steps that happened with Motemo. We have a city attorney involved and there were specifications and that was only because of the sewer situation, if I recall correctly. You would need legal counsel and honestly, I don't think that's something the city should be paying for. If they want to put a guarantee on that property, that would be something that they should be paying the legal fees that they are willing to do.
I won't mention it, I'll just let them decide then.
No, I don't. But you understand, I understand.
Okay, so we're all set on the public hearing for February 1st. All right, next item on the agenda is the DDA. Did everybody have a chance to go into the mmml.org and look at that? Did everybody have a chance to go into the MML dot org and look at that for the DDA?
I did that.
Okay. That's got all kinds of information in there, doesn't it, Cindy? And just for the record, uh, we did this in two thousand seventeen. And in two thousand eighteen, the state changed the laws in there. And the big change in it came in January first of nineteen. The only real change that, that I could get out of the whole thing is that the DDAs had to report to several different entities within the government, within the state government. And they combined it so that it's only one entity that you have to report to. There's also a requirement that they have two meetings a year for the DDA. And in reading over everything, that's what I came up with. So that's the only changes that are in there. So does anybody have any questions? I'm gonna be, go to council on Thursday, and we're gonna have, hopefully, we're gonna have Justin Horvath at the council meeting, and then also Chuck Donaldson from the. I don't know what his title is. He's out of Detroit, he's in charge of the DDAs in this area.
So are we gonna have to start already from scratch, or can we use some of the materials we had before?
We can use a lot of the material that we had before.
Like the history?
Yep. We might have to modify it depending on if we get, well, we have to get a professional company to do it. Because I, I don't think that there's, and any of us combined within the city of Perry could come up and do it correctly. To put it together. And we came to that conclusion last time. Devon?
I think you guys are doing great. I'm gonna excuse myself.
Okay, thank you. You need to tell me where to drop that phone off.
Nope, Mindy was nice enough to give up her phone, she insisted.
Okay, all right.
In my pocket. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dylan. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys, too. Bob, for my notes, so you're going to council on Thursday?
Correct.
Along with Justin Horvath and another person?
Chuck Donaldson.
Chuck Donaldson, thank. Okay, and you're presenting, you're presenting it to council?
I talked to him at the last meeting on it.
Okay.
And it's just to provide a lot of detailed information on questions that they had asked.
Okay.
And also, Justin has found a source of funds that might help us.
Okay.
And then Chuck is gonna come up to help us lay it out. Sue wants to set up a work group that will be of various people to direct this whole thing to go forward. She wants to have a meeting, uh, with a lot of people, that the only subject matter that they discuss is the DDA.
So that's when we would invite the businessman again?
I, we don't have to do that. That was something that James suggested that we do. We have to have public hearings, but we don't have to specifically invite business people to come in like we did.
Aren't you mean that time that planning commission had the business people come?
Remember when?
And they did all the presentation? Do you remember what he's talking about?
Yeah, that, that was.
The planning commission had the business people come, and a presentation was given to them?
Right.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, but we, we don't have to do that because that, that was not a public hearing or a public meeting. It was just, they wanted to get the. James wanted to make sure that the businesses were behind it. So Greg and I went out and passed these papers out, tell them what it was, and then we went back and told them, come on into that meeting. Well, we scheduled the meeting in our, in our infinite wisdom, we scheduled the meeting at seven o'clock at night. And as a result, most of the business people that are, are, the important ones were gone. They had already left town. So it, we don't need to do that specifically for the business people. We have to have public hearings, which they're welcome to come to.
So how many people are on the council today that were on back when we presented it the first time?
Devon, can you answer that?
Devon's on here.
Craig?
The only one would be, uh, Carrie.
And Anna.
No.
Carrie.
Carrie is the only one from the last time.
Carrie.
You were on it too, weren't you?
It was done before we ever come. I've been in here before.
Our planning commission, so she knows about it. My question is, how many of the councilmen?
Carrie.
Carrie was.
Carrie, Carrie Wood.
Carrie was the only one that was involved, was on the council at the last.
That was her at the time.
No, if you were, but you know the background of what we're talking about.
Yes. I think everybody on the council knows pretty much all the background from the last time. We've all been discussed and updated and everything from the last time, I'm assuming. Would you agree?
So Bob, from, from the planning commission, what do you need from us tonight? Do you need anything specific?
If you have any questions or things that, you know, you might, might bring up that would be beneficial on Thursday. Bob Porter called me and asked about putting the McQueen house into the DDA area. To see if we could contact the state to get some funds to help us on that. Since the McQueen house is owned by the city of Perry, uh, there's no reason why we couldn't do it because there's no taxes being captured from them. But it's, it's a matter of, can we get grants for that? I, I don't know.
Well, I was looking through and research. I, um, I looked at the Main Street stuff.
Yeah.
And, and involved in that, I didn't see anything that required being part of the DDA to be, to be part of the getting of any of those grants. There was a lot of information dealing with a lot of community involvement and striving to get, uh, onto the, like, trying to think of the actual words. The historic, kinda like registries and become a historic preservation city and things like this, that involved kind of a, a process to do that. And then, uh, when that process, part of that process though was a significant amount of verbiage towards putting together a volunteer, um, structure that would be set in place and guaranteed in order to be involved both with the DDA and with any type of historic involvement. From everything I was reading, in order to get grants and things like that, both for the DDA and for the Main Street, they expect a significant portion of volunteer labor to be, um, involved in the process.
In putting it together, you mean?
That, and also the work involved in trying to up, to improve the downtown.
Well, the planning commission, because we're less, a city less than five thousand, the planning commission is the one that is gonna be the board for the DDA.
Oh, it is for sure that way?
Well, it can have it.
Yeah.
You can get enough, or if you wanna go outside.
Yeah.
You can go outside and get the people, but I don't know if you can get enough people to volunteer.
Yeah.
To help. I know that, you know, two people would, would do it, Vic and Kevin and John, what's his, the insurance?
Paulding.
John Paulding. He said he would do it.
Which one's Vic?
Vic is Darlin Highbrow.
Okay, Darlin, Vic Darlin, gotcha. Thank you.
So, you know, we can get enough business people, and then the truck stop people would do that. So I think if, if we wanna set up a separate board, we can do it. Now, if we wanna do that in the future, we can do that also. But the state is allowed, if we have less than five thousand population, the planning commission can do it.
I didn't see that, that you can choose to go that direction for sure. I didn't know you had to do that.
No, you can go either way.
Okay.
You know, whichever way you wanna go. But based on what we did before, my personal feeling is until it gets organized and gets, yeah, we're ready to go, then we could split it off to the business people because they're gonna be the ones that are gonna benefit the most from it.
Ultimately, I think they've gotta be a part of it. In its infancy right now, probably, yeah, some input from them, but certainly, they gotta be a big stakeholder once it's off the ground.
Yeah. Well, Kelly will tell you that we had many meetings, that we had, uh, a lot of people that were here that were business people. But we had the meetings at four o'clock in the afternoon, so they were still here. And we told them it would only last an hour, so.
One thing I was, as I was reading through a lot of the documentation and looking at other cities that, that were talking about their DDAs, DDAs and things like that, one concern, looking at ours, our downtown, that was kind of a concern for me, is the lack of businesses that have a storefront that requires an update. For instance, a good example, TDS. TDS owns a huge chunk of downtown on that one side by the library and has nothing there. And no reason to want to update it, to be part of the community, to do anything, it's just there. I don't even know what goes on in there, you know?
That's where your telephones are at.
Yeah, well, I don't think so, but there's something there, I don't know, but they, they don't take anybody there, you don't see anybody coming in or going out, hardly ever, and, um, I can't think what other ones, there's a couple, the section next to Charlie's, there's a couple of sections, there are a couple of businesses there that don't have a front storefront to them. And so I'm kinda like, how would the DDA affect them? And how would they be, want to be a part of the DDA? Cause it's really, I mean, I wouldn't see why they would have a desire to even necessarily update their storefront.
Well, if, if like Vic Darlin said, you know, he wanted to update his storefront with the bricks.
Yeah.
And stone. And he said, I'd do it a whole lot better if he had matching funds.
Yeah.
So when you get matching funds, or they pay ninety percent of it to, to upgrade it.
Yeah.
You know, that's a tremendous incentive for somebody to do it. If they don't wanna do it, they're not gonna do it. Now, I can tell you that Kevin from the resale shop was against the DDA to begin with. And once he found out that what it could do, he was very interested and very supportive of it.
And what, what, for instance, with Kevin, what is it gonna do, what would it do for him? Just thinking and.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna improve the downtown area.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be able to advertise things, and we're gonna be able to get grants, and we're gonna be able to capture taxes that are now currently going outside the city. And if we come up with a plan, and this is just a hypothetical plan, that all the storefronts are gonna be painted paint. Then he might object to it and say, I'm not gonna paint it. Well, then he doesn't have to. But if the funds are there to do it and to attract additional businesses, additional businesses coming in are gonna bring more people to him. In reality, he's gonna bring a lot of businesses or a lot of people into Perry. You know, himself, so.
You know, if you just look at the streetscape that's downtown in that area, it was done, I mean, how many, twenty years ago or close to it? You know, their opportunity, potentially, the businesses, they wanna do some spitting up of, of just the, the streetscape as well, might be something to consider in the future. But it doesn't have to be the facade of all buildings that's sort of leaving.
How was all that done? But that's one thing, I've been knowing in respect to, that I know of, is to administer streetlights and all that stuff, how did that all get dealt, done?
State of Michigan done that, street. The railroad track, the bathroom.
So they, they just came in and said, we're gonna beautify this for you or something? Was it a grant?
No, it was just part of their.
They wanted to change the width of the road.
Yeah, change the road widths.
And a lot of infrastructure under the roads at that time, and water and things were all redone. There wasn't a Main Street. Madison became Main Street if you will, for a period of time.
Yeah, I know, I heard. So it was just, it was probably a, like, city council at the time kinda deal, yeah, we go ahead and do this, but.
The state, the state. Don't make the city add a choice because it's higher than fifty Qs.
Yeah. So they just decided for the sake of the city to, just out of the goodness of their heart, to put nicer things in?
Kelly's got it.
I, I actually know the answer to this one. We, we, the city got iced tea money from the feds. Uh, many communities around the country were able to redo their streetscapes, and that's how Perry managed to get its streetscape done about twenty years ago. Could you hear me?
Say a good word for it. Yes. She said, yes, basically.
It was iced tea money, transportation.
Glad they can't go do that again. Everybody hear that?
Thank you, Carol.
Did I say it right? This is basically.
Well, they came in and said, we're gonna do this, and for that, we'll do this for you.
Okay.
So did, wasn't everybody telling that the downtown area or any of the area that we're talking about for the DDA boundaries, um, that there is deteriorating property value?
It doesn't.
There wasn't an answer from Mr. Swiler.
Well, if you, if you read the new law, if you read the new law, it states that same thing, but it says if you want to improve the property values in the area.
So it can be either or?
It can be either or. But before, in the other law, it stated you had to have deteriorating property value. And that is what Bridges based his facts on. That, that we didn't have it. And now, you know, everybody's property values are going up because of the economy. You look at the houses that are being built.
But now it can be either or.
Huh?
But now it can be either or.
Right.
I do have a bit of a problem with Mr. Donaldson.
Okay.
When he came to our presentation, he made a couple of statements that were not accurate. And I don't know if he misunderstood the questions. But he was saying things like, for instance, that money could be used outside of the DDA. For, for.
It, it can't be used outside the DDA.
No, and he was saying that it could.
But he was relatively new in that position also.
Okay.
So, I mean, he had only been in there like, I wanna say a couple of months.
Oh, okay.
And if you remember, Tom Bridges said that we could have two DDA districts, you know, one downtown and one out at the, the four corners. Which we can't, it's gotta be contiguous one district.
It is fuzzy. Some readings out it and makes you think that.
Well, that's why I say there isn't enough brain power in Perry to make it right, so we gotta get somebody else that's gonna, gonna do it. And I've got two, two people that are gonna provide quotes to us, so.
Provide what?
Quotes to us for doing it. One is Roe, and the other one is a gentleman by the name of Justin, who is currently doing work for the city of Perry along this, along the same line.
Is that the, is that the attorney?
No.
Justin the attorney?
No, Justin, and I don't have his name here.
I think the attorney is named English.
Justin English.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not him. But they both said that they'd have it to me by the seventh of January, so, and I haven't received it yet, so as soon as I get it, I'll, you know, let it go. All right, any other discussions you wanna have on the DDA? Questions or comments?
I was gonna ask you the thing about capturing money in, instead of having it go elsewhere, kind of a little more explanation of that.
Okay. By the time you get back, I will explain it all.
Yeah, thank you.
Boy, I hate these masks. I was talking to somebody the other day about the masks and. I was talking to somebody the other day about the masks. They said that their wife went to the dentist, and the dentist said that they have masked mouth. And they said because you got the mask on, you don't get rid of the germs and the heat that gets out of there. So it creates bacteria growth of stuff in your mouth.
Oh, yeah. There's lots of people who wear masks all day, I'm one of them, when we do hazmat cleanup, so, I don't know. Surgeons wear them a lot. Nurses.
They're suck on ones.
Yeah, that's the kind of wear, wear the big ones, so, I don't know. I've not heard that, that's interesting.
I didn't hear it till he said it, so. They got an advertisement on television now that you can get a rash around your mouth or burn the mask.
Oh, my chin is totally broken out. I have mask needs, those I have. That's why I just have to keep the mask on, cause now I can't take it off.
All right, your question.
All right, so you mentioned something about, we can capture through the DDA taxes that would otherwise go outside the city. How does that statement work? I mean, how does the DDA do that?
Well, you, once you get the DDA going, you go to the various utility companies and anybody that has a portion of the tax dollars from Perry, go to them. Such as, uh. Come on, Mindy, help me out.
Senior Center?
Huh?
Senior Center?
Well, no, because that would be exempt from it. Uh, let's say, uh, consumer power.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Part of our tax money goes to them.
For?
Well, all right, let's, let's use the Lansing Airport. The Lansing Airport is not in Inham County. But yet, most of the money that the airport operates on comes from Inham County. So, they would, they would go under the same bill that we do here in the city. That the increase in the taxes here would not go to them. It would stay here in the DDA.
So they get a portion of our increases in our tax, property taxes here to go pay for the airport?
No, I just used, I don't know if Chiawassee County is involved in that. But I do know that Inham County is, when the airport's in Clinton County. So if there's, you know, if somebody was here that could go on taxes and look and see. Whoever we pay money to from the taxes for the city of Perry. We would go to them and approach them and say, hey, we've got a DDA now. Can we capture that portion of the money that would normally go to you?
But do they have to say yes?
No, they can say no.
So you're saying like, so for instance, a portion of the property taxes go towards the schools? The DDA?
We don't do anything with schools.
Okay.
So it goes to the county, don't, don't give money to the county?
Yeah. And the SADA, we give money to SADA?
So they would lose.
Cessna and things like that? But then they have the right to?
Value increase.
Correct.
Not, not the property value.
Property value increase.
Just any increase from the time the DDA started. So like, if, if a business is worth.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, then the next year, it's worth.
Fifty thousand one hundred.
Fifty one thousand.
Yeah, there you go.
The DDA keeps the one thousand. And the county will not get any of that one thousand.
Sorry, I missed, sorry. Say that last part again, so I wanna make sure.
The county will not get any of that one thousand.
Yeah. Where, so, so each, does each residential business, et cetera? Send a portion of property taxes to the county?
Now, your question, could they say yes or no? They can say yes or no. And if they say no to us, they have said yes to every other DDA within the area. Cause all the rest of them do the same thing.
And you're sure on that?
Mm-hmm.
Why would they say yes? They can't, why would they kind of lose that property tax to get back to the local community?
Well, because it's gonna make it grow, which is gonna increase their bottom line.
But aren't they relying upon that to fix roads and upkeep different municipal things with all the?
Well, the roads, the roads is a state which we wouldn't be involved in. You know, if Perry, the Perry roads, we could be involved in if they're within the DDA district.
Yeah. I would say like, why would, I'm just trying to.
Because it would, it's supposed to bring in new business, make businesses interested into coming.
Yeah.
So the more businesses that come, the higher, um, the revenues from taxes. Am I saying that right?
Yep.
So it's a, it's like a, a little gamble. But we'll give this up.
With the hopes of you.
But, in the future, there'll be more businesses coming in because we have this DDA. Therefore, we'll end up with more in the end.
So on that note, this is another question I had. If, for instance, I own, I own a property downtown. And it's already a storefront and I'm paying taxes on it. Um, and a business comes in, I sell it to them, how, how, what's the DDA get out of that? And how does that relate to the increased property taxes? Cause we're, it's already being paid property taxes on it, so. How, what would the DDA, what would, more could the DDA capture in order to say that's a benefit? Minus just not having it and having someone come in and, mind?
I don't understand your question.
Okay, so, I own a business downtown, all right? We're saying, this is, the point of all this is that we want more businesses to come in, right? I have a business downtown. Everybody, every single place downtown is a business right now. It's already got property taxes and everybody's relying on, having to pay those property taxes. So where, we, how, if a business comes and buys one of those downtown, cause they're empty. Someone's just sitting on it, and I'm sitting on it cause it's empty, it's from a business, I'm maybe running the top part or something like that. How does that benefit the DDA? Benefit the city? Cause how does that increase property taxes? I guess that's what I'm guessing.
Well, we don't, we don't increase the property taxes. They're gonna go up naturally because of inflation.
Yeah. But they would, they would do that normally. So how, we're saying the benefit though, that Chiawassee County is getting a benefit, that all these things from businesses coming in, is what we're saying. And that as there's more businesses, then we get more money, right? More property tax, but we already have all of our businesses here. So we can't get new businesses in to increase property taxes, all the land is being paid on right now.
You know, you've only considered the downtown area, yes. If you go out to the four corners, there's a lot of land out there.
Where?
At the four corners out there.
Yeah, where?
Well, next to the truck stop. They just put the KFC in there.
Yeah, so there's that one, and, and then possibly the Big Z we're talking about down there. But that's pretty much the end of, and if Motombo Foods comes in on the other side, there's like one more spot down there for the other side of Dollar General. That's pretty much the entirety of the land that direction that could be developed.
Yep. Unless, unless somebody tears something down like the motel and builds something in there. But I, I think the whole point that everybody is concentrating on is the taxes. And how it affects things. That is not the point of the DDA. It's, you gotta have skin in the game to play. And this is Perry's skin in the game to play. It's the amount of grants that are available. And that's the big thing. And, you know, uh. I don't know what the grants are, I just know that, that Meridian Township, who's on the news tonight. Meridian Township has a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the CARES Act, which is the virus act. They are gonna distribute to their businesses. It's a grant, twenty-five thousand dollar. We don't get it because we don't have a DDA. Uh, Chiawassee County got the same thing. And Vernon and Durand and all these other municipalities got it because they have DDAs. But we didn't get it because we don't have a DDA. We've got no skin in the game to play, and therefore, they're not gonna give us anything.
If it weren't for the grant options I was talking about, I wouldn't be thinking we'd waste our time putting the DDA in. Because incremental monies that you move from one pot to the other is gonna be minimal.
I think Kelly has a comment. Kelly, did you want to jump in here?
I just wanted, wanted to try to help clarify that within whatever the DDA district is. Um, the DDA only captures the tax on the increase. From when the DDA was started, which was what Mindy was describing. And it's not about storefronts or lighting. In part, it's, it's an attempt to beautify the, the whole area. And it, money can be used for things like festivals, um, community advertising. Now initially, Larry's right, it's like a thousand dollars roughly, maybe the first year, if that. But over time, that money can accumulate to where it's significant money. So, the grants are just the icing on the cake. And that's where the real money is, when, when we first start with a DDA.
Thank you, Kelly.
Did you hear what she said? Basically, the money's in the grants.
Yeah.
So why is it, you're only allowed to apply for these grants if you have a DDA?
That's the way that they set the law. I, I can't answer that, I don't know. If I would guess, and that's, that's all it is, is strictly a guess. I would say that they look at Perry and say, Perry, you don't care about your downtown, cause you're not doing anything about it. Vernon, you got a downtown development, you care about your town, you're putting money into that, into the DDA. Uh, Duran, you know, Langsberg, all these little towns are doing that. Perry's sitting here doing nothing. We're not doing anything. So they're saying, why should we help you if you won't help us? You know, and that, that's, I think, you know, I would look at somebody, you know. Uh, I can say that when I lived in another town, uh, the neighbor across the street was an old lady. And whenever it would snow, I'd go over and plow her driveway out. So she could get in and out. I didn't charge her for it, I didn't do anything for it. And she'd come out and waved at me and say, thanks, and that's, that's all, which is fine. But then all of a sudden, she got the guy, the neighbor next to her that came out. And he started plowing her driveway, so I quit. I figured, okay, she's got him, and then I got talking to him, and she's paying him fifty bucks at the shop to do it. And I said, okay, if she can pay him, she can pay me, which I didn't care about doing it. And then the neighbor next to us, I used to do the sidewalk all the way down our property and his property to snow blow it. And then when I was traveling and I was out of town, he'd do his sidewalk up to the property line stop. So I quit going all the way. So they're gonna look at it and say, okay, if you don't have anything in it, we're not gonna do anything. That would be what I would say. But the grants, like Larry said, the grants are the big thing. That's, that's the, the big thing. Kelly just said that, you know, if we get a thousand dollars the first year, we'll be lucky. And if we had to rely on the tax increase, it's gonna be ten years before we're gonna replace the light bulbs on the, the, the light stands downtown, so.
Did, I know you have some, I think you have some knowledge in this, did the Perry Township DDA get a grant to do those lights on Lake, on Lansing Road, or did they pay those out of the?
I don't have any idea. You'd have to ask Sue. Cause she was on the DDA in Perry Township. All right, have we finished the DDA? All right, arts recreation discussion? We tabled that indefinitely.
So that needs to come off.
Yeah. Uh, fee schedule?
Thought we tabled that one indefinitely.
Same thing, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Q and A on the website?
That was on there, I've not heard back from Rob, I'll get in touch with him and see if he's got a. He was gonna try to get us an example of a, another website or city someplace that had some better information for building permits and building information that we might be able to integrate in our website.
Okay.
Langsberg, their website's like fifty thousand times better than ours. Compared to theirs, ours is junk. And, and everything is very clear, it is straightforward, it's right on the front page, so you don't have to go and try and find everything. I, I don't even say anything against our staff here. Cause I think it's IT right that controls the website.
Yeah, they set that up.
It's a terrible website. It's, it's junk and I can't, you know, if that's what, the best that they can do, we should be able to find someone better to do that website.
Yeah, I think generically, I'd agree, we've got some opportunities for improving our website, too.
Cause I was going off, I was looking at the DDA information and stuff like that. And so I went to Langsberg in one instance. And there's, I was like, wow, this is how a website should be, and especially for a city. And ours is, ours is, looks like something from twenty years ago. But.
Okay, so you'll follow up on that?
I'll follow up on the, the rock, rock question for an example.
Yeah, but they have like, they have like right up front, if I remember correctly. Um, zoning requirements, zoning requests are just like big buttons right on the front page and ready to, you know, easily. Here's, here's the city council, you know, people, boom, you know? And it was just so easy to see where you need to go to get the different things.
Okay, L one and L two zoning ordinance, do we need to talk about that?
Yes, please. I'll try and make it snappy, I know we're running, we're running late. So, um, this is, this'll be more for Kelly's benefit, um, but to get us all up to speed. Several months ago, we started looking at chapter twelve, industrial districts, that, that chapter. The list of table of uses for our industrial districts was fairly short, not really well defined. And got us into a bit of a pinch when someone wanted to crush gravel south of town. So we wanted to find a way to tighten this up and had discussed some of the ways that we could possibly do this. Um, I had a conversation with John Souter, and this was because of Motombo Foods that we talked about it. Was that our current wastewater treatment is a lagoon system. And it cannot handle a lot of industrial waste, or else it will destroy the lagoons for everybody. And a lot of these businesses that we have listed in our I one and I two use. Would, would require by the state, an industrial pretreatment program. Um, which is a very lengthy document, and involves a lot, and generally towns in our size with a lagoon system. Do not have, do not offer an industrial pretreatment program. So that's where I started. Um, the list is, the state provides a list of the types of businesses. Um, that is, that is thirty-five different businesses long. Covering things like petroleum refining, metal finishing, iron and steel manufacturing. So, there's that portion, so all of. So, all of those types of businesses that are listed in the IPP program are immediately something we can't do. We can't handle it without running the risk of, well, A, we would have to pay a lot of money to have someone come in and set it up, an industrial pre-treatment program. And then we would have to manage it, and we would always run the risk that anything that those businesses put out and ended up in our lagoons would ruin the lagoons for everybody. So, hence the industrial pre-treatment program. So, that's the first piece. The second piece is that, along with this list of, of businesses, and in some of the ones that we have here, they also require permits from the state, from the DEQ and federal permits because of the Clean Water Act and the Clean Air Act. So, it doesn't say that you can't have them, but that for certain businesses, depending on how much they're emitting, depending on the types of, um, waste or pollution they're, they're emitting, they will have to have an air permit, um, a water permit, or a DEQ wetland permit. The DEQ says if you're moving more than one acre of, uh, I can redo the code here. This is soil erosion and sedimentation control. A permit is required for any earth change in activity which disturbs one or more acres of land or with, is, which is within 500 feet or a lake or stream. So, and it goes on more about what it defines that you have to get a DEQ wetland permit for, in that case. So, my question to the group is this. One of the pieces that we got burned on in having this is that we had this list of businesses that were permitted or not permitted. But obviously, there were a lot in there that weren't, and that's how they managed to kind of sneak in the back door. So, when I'm thinking about rewriting this in a way that's a little bit more tight, we can build lists again, we can add on to the list that we have, make them all not permitted, or, you know, add to there. Or, um, and so that would make it more clear for the reader, but would be bulky. So, it has, it's advantage of somebody looking to get a permit could look at that list and see whether they could get one or not. It'd be very easy. The backside of that is, is if we didn't put it on the list, they come in the door and they can take it. So, yeah, another way to do this is, instead of listing all of the businesses, we can say, if you are proposing a business that falls under the industrial pre-treatment program, it is not permitted. Here is where you find that list. You know, provide them with the, the reference to the, the regulatory drivers that go to them. We could do the same thing for Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act, DEQ permit. So, we could say, you can, you cannot have these things for an industrial pre-treatment program. If you need to pull an air permit, a water permit, or wetlands permit, it falls under special land use. Everything else is permitted. Like, that would be one way we could do it. That puts the onus on the person proposing the business to have to go and look up those regulatory drivers and see what they are. So, or there could be another way to do it. And I was hoping maybe to get some feedback from you about that. Is do we, if, if we list it out, we could miss something if they... But then we put the onus on them to do their research for the reg drivers, which, me, from a, from an environmental perspective, they should be doing it anyways. They should be very familiar with Clean Water Act, Clean Air Acts, DEQ permitting, but, you know, we know from a previous business that that is not always the case.
Well, the previous business, two things I remember. One, they did do permits up to the state and stuff, so they should have known those things, because I'm sure the state was kind of seeing it, this was a possibility. Two, they came in under the fact that because of the high construction of Perry Lakes and the rock crushing that was involved with the quarry, were able to use that to come in underneath and do what they were doing. And, so, I guess, one thing I want, if you clarify, if for something like that, we did want, I guess, I'm assuming, so that we could develop Perry Lakes, so we would need an industrial thing for that to happen? I'm assuming, how do we give it so we can have those type of things if we need them and want them for our community, but not the other without it coming into a legal question?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Is it possible with what you're proposing?
It is, because if we say, I mean, if they fall under the industrial pre-treatment program, meaning that they're going to be discharging waste that go to our lagoon, we can't provide that with them. So, they're immediately out. But other businesses that need other permits, like you're talking about water use permits, land use permits, clean, you know, air permits, they can apply for a special land use, or we, you know, and, and so there's a way that they can do that. Because getting permits is fine, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're bad, you know, or you're doing something nefarious. So, there is a mechanism for them to still come to planning commission and city council and say, we don't need an IPP, we're not fine. We're going to have to get some other permits. Are you cool with that? Here's what we're going to be doing.
So, the only thing you're saying would be, out is anything immediately is, if it's going to deal with our lagoon, don't even bother.
Yeah, if you could impact our lagoon, and you're going to need an industrial pre-treatment program, we can't help you. We don't have the infrastructure to help you. So, that's already gone. If their business they're proposing needs DEQ permits or US EPA permits, that's fine, that's good that they know that. But that tells us that they're doing something more than just, you know, like putting up a, a mini storage or something like that. And so, that they should go through the special land use process to do it.
Would that include Matumbo? Would that be an example of far, that's something recently that we dealt with? With that kitchen, or they weren't necessarily right away, but they were taking other test kitchens, stuff like that, they might need to do a little bit more?
Um, they would actually, more than likely be exempt from the state from doing an industrial pre-treatment program. Yeah. So, they, so the, the level that they're doing, yeah. Yes, they, they would be, they would be exempt from that. So, what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way, like you said, to let businesses still come in that make them want to be here. But make sure that if they are going to be doing something that could impact our air or water or soil, that they just aren't given free rent. Because right now, you know, um, let's see... Let me see some here. Heating, electric, and power generating plants are permitted under an I-2. So, heating and electric power generating plants produce a lot of pollution, and they need an air permit, and they need to follow that air permit. The way ours is written now, they can just go ahead and go in, and we never have to approve, we don't have to see it. They, we've already given them approval by our zoning. So, it isn't to say that we wouldn't approve a power generating plant. We would just make them go through the extra steps to say, have you gotten, you know, have, have you gotten your permits for air, for water, for soil? We need to see it first, okay, we think it's cool, okay, now you can go in. That's what that would look like. It's kind of complicated, and it's an answer we don't have to make tonight. I just wanted to get some feedback about, like, it's like this huge thing, and I don't want to make like the chapter like 29 pages long, but I also don't want to make it so that all it is is a bunch of reg drivers and everybody else has to go find it. I'm not quite sure I can do the balance.
My understanding of it is you get almost two buckets. You've got the bucket that says, I don't care what you say, basically, we don't, we don't want any part of it.
We can't, yeah.
Quite frankly, for all the reasons you stated.
Yeah.
You know, to address that piece, but I would potentially say, here are examples of those things that are excluded. For a complete list, please reference, you know, that Michigan document. Now, we've got the other bucket that says, we're not saying no right off the bat, but there's some additional steps you've got to go through before we're really going to talk to you about it. And almost a little checklist of, you have your air permits, your land use permits, et cetera. Almost want to subdivide it into a couple of pieces?
That's kind of, that's kind of my thought, yeah.
It's a, almost an if-things clauses. So, if this, then this, but if not, then down here, then if, then this, then this, or if not. And, and so, we're just kind of stepping them through the process that, you know, first off, it's going to hit our lagoon, you're done, don't even bother. Second process, okay, if it's going to involve one of these three things, then you need to go to see what is required of Air Clean Air Act or Water. And then, if, if it's not involved with that, then come down here, okay, here's what we allow in, in City of Perry, basically. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah. So, so, so it would be, if you're going to hit our lagoon, you can have it. If you need a permit from the feds or the state because of environmental concerns, air, water, soil, you'll need a special land use permit. If you don't need an air, water, or soil permit, if you're not going to hit our lagoons, then it's permitted.
Well, that way it sounds pretty simple.
Yeah. And cleans up a lot of stuff, it makes the language a lot cleaner, too. Is that now in your, what you're saying and what you know from your side of things, is that, is there concerns about leaving us Perry open in that way? Or how, how, why are you concerned? Is it, I mean, it sounds like what you've got going on is simple, but also very thorough.
Yeah.
So, I guess, is there, is there concerns that we could leave ourselves open, or...
Oh, I, I mean, of course, I always think there is a way. The biggest thing I was looking for tonight was, because right now, the style of Chapter 12 is the same style as the rest of the document, meaning we have a table of uses, like we do for commercial, like we do for residential. So, so Chapter 12, the feel, the look of it, the texture of it would be different because it would be like you described, an if-then statement, instead of a table of uses. And I didn't know how you felt about changing the structure of it so that now that this chapter would hang differently, I guess, for lack of a better word. The style of it would be different than our other chapters.
Well, the fact is, the requirements are different for this chapter than they are for, you know, single-family residents.
Yes. There's a lot more to say. And I, we have, what, how many industrial properties? Three?
Yeah.
We don't have very many anyways?
I don't think we own any.
I think there's only one that's available right now.
And I don't think that the person that is going to go to this chapter is going to compare it to the other ones.
Right.
That was the feedback I was looking for, because I can start drafting this if-then language and the decision tree to go through. But if you all were like, no way, no way, then I wasn't getting...
I think cleaning it up and making it simple is always better.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Carol, Kelly, questions or input here?
No, none for me. Sounds like an excellent. Good job, thank you for helping us get started tightening that up, it's much needed.
Hopefully, hopefully. Mindy? Always value your input.
I say both of them.
Okay. 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 Then I will work on that, and hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have some initial language that we can start picking apart and clarifying that way. If the group is okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other business that we need to do?
Need to back up and approve, uh...
I guess, maybe that's...
Minutes from last meeting. I move that we approve the minutes from our December 7th, 2020 meeting as written.
Okay.
Okay. Genevieve?
Yes.
Okay. Craig?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Okay. The minutes are approved.
Thank you.
Anything else? Our next meeting is February 1st. We'll have that, uh, public hearing tentatively scheduled for right now. And I'll get in touch with them and take care of that, so... All right, anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.